Mayor.
Yep. Oh, did you, I have to repeat that? Pardon me? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. Thank you for giving Katie and I the opportunity to have a discussion and seek some policy just direction from you tonight on digital signs. So before we begin in earnest in the conversation tonight, I thought it would be helpful to just establish a common understanding regarding the typical types of signage that you can see around different communities. The first type is static signs, which is this one on the bottom left. Of course, static implies that it doesn't change very frequently, and it is typically, the signs are typically mounted on the sign structure itself with simply panels and letters. A changeable copy sign, which is this one right here where the mouse is moving, has the ability for messages to be easily changed and installed, and those letters are individually applied. Typically, there's tracks that run horizontally and they just slide in and out. Digital messaging, this one right here, is typically a monochromatic text message board that uses a computer to simply generate letters and words. An electronic message board, this type over here, is more advanced, and it typically has LED displays that use a computer to generate images, potentially video, pictures, and also text. They're very similar, but a little bit different, but very similar to the TVs that we may have in our homes. Another important distinction to make regarding digital signage is based on the intended audience. An EMC or electronic message board and digital billboards are not the same thing. An EMC is placed onsite on the property of the business and advertises the goods and services available at that location. On the other hand, digital billboards are typically placed adjacent to major transportation routes such as I-10 with a lot of traffic, and they advertise off-site goods and services to a very broad and diverse audience.
Thank you. There are digital signs currently in Goodyear. Generally, they aren't allowed, except in the entertainment district, which I'll talk about in just a moment. We do allow digital signs for fuel pricing, and that's because federal law requires gas stations to display their fuel prices and then update them regularly as gas changes. And so only the fuel price itself is allowed to be a digital sign. That's the only digital sign that's permitted. Schools are exempt from the zoning ordinance, which includes the sign ordinance, so schools can have digital signs, so some of them do in the city of Goodyear. We do have a non-permitted sign at the community park that was installed many, many, many years ago. And then there are a couple freeway pylon signs that include digital elements. It's important to note that a freeway pylon sign is onsite signage. It's different than the digital marquee signs, and those digital elements were approved through special use permits or zoning processes. The entertainment district was created a couple years ago when we updated the sign ordinance. It wa, um, digital signs were permitted in this area because it is a regional commercial area. It's different than other commercial areas in the city. There are likely to be more outside visitors visiting this area. It is much higher intensity, higher density type uses. Um, it's, um, when we created this area, we did create regulations such as how bright digital signs can be, how often they can change. We can't really tell you how those regulations are working because we haven't had any digital signs go up in the entertainment district. We have had a, just a couple requests for digital signs over the years. One was an informal request by Walgreens, specifically the one on Pebble Creek and McDowell. But you, you know, oftentimes Walgreens do have digital components, and, and they made a request, and when we told them at the time we didn't allow digital signs, they didn't pursue it further. And then more recently Culvers has actually made a submittal for a digital sign, which was not approved by city staff since we don't allow digital signs in the area they are locating. There are pros and cons to digital signs. Several of the pros include it, it does increase messaging to the public, it's easy for business to change it out, and it may be an improved aesthetic over other ops and options such as the changeable copy that Christopher showed us. Some of the cons include it can be a distraction, especially to drivers. The city does have very limited to no ability to respond to the content, and we can't regulate content of signage, only if it's off-site or onsite signage. And then if, there could be potential impacts to nearby residents. Thanks. We did look at our neighboring communities to find out who allows digital signs, and just so you know, this pertains only to commercial. Several of the cities will allow digital signs under certain circumstances. We were trying to find out more broadly in commercial districts who allows them. Chandler and Glendale did not allow them broadly in commercial districts. Surprise allows monument signs, and what I mean by that are those freestanding monument signs in front of a business, and they could either be advertising a single business or be a multi-tenant sign that has multiple businesses listed on them. And then five cities, Avondale, Buckeye, Gilbert, Mesa, and Phoenix, allow digital components both as a freestanding monument sign or wall signage, meaning the signage that is actually displayed on the building itself advertising. Now again, this is a very broad categorizing. Each of these cities has different regulations and limitations on how they allow the digital signs. Thank you. We also looked at if they require separation from residential, and four cities do require digital signs to have some sort of separation from residential, single-family residential, I should say, uses, whereas three cities do not require any separation.
Thank you, Katie. So tonight, as we begin to pivot to the policy direction portion of the conversation tonight, just want to make a couple of things, excuse me, clear. Digital or electronic signs are simply just another type of signage. If this type of signage is supported and we're given direction to move forward to allow them in the community, then the normal and customary approach to sign regulations are clearly supported by recent case law. And what I mean by that is it's very clear and supported by case law that we can address sign issues, things like brightness, how big they are, where they go on a property, are they on the wall, are they a monument, and how that message may transition so it doesn't blink and create real bad distractions, and how it transitions should it dissolve and things of that nature, or how long it even has to stay up in order to help with that, the safety of the motoring public on the roadways. So those are the things that we can clearly do without any question or without any problems. Conversely, due to the Reed case, the Supreme Court of the United States imposed limitations on what cities can address. In short, as Katie alluded to, sign regulation has to be content neutral, which means that we cannot use what is said or read on a sign in order to determine compliance with city requirements. Signs are protected by the First Amendment, and therefore, if the digital or electronic signage's signs are allowed or be just supported by the city, by the council as part of the direction tonight, we cannot pick and choose the types of businesses that can utilize digital signage. It's very clear that we cannot address the content of digital signage, again, as Katie alluded to. Digital signs would be allowed at businesses that council is very excited about and supportive of, but conversely, they may also be allowed at businesses that you're maybe a little less enthusiastic about, like smoke shops or pawn shops from medical marijuana, things of that nature. The city cannot limit digital signage also to just allow text, because you have to read what the sign says in order to determine if it's text or pictures. So as technology changes over time, and we transition to more detailed pictures and things of that nature, that type of content on the signs would also be allowed. So keeping our presentation brief, we just kind of wanted to outline a little bit about the history of what's been in the city, some common understanding of what digital signage is, and some things that we can address and things that frankly, we don't have any ability to address. And so we have a couple of different policy options here for you to consider. The first one, A, is do nothing, and we can just continue to allow digital signage in the entertainment district, and of course, there's no time at all to implement that. There doesn't take any effort because we already allow it. Option B would be to support digital signage, instruct us to move forward with the appropriate amendments to allow it in the city, and then we can address those brightness issues, where they go, if they go on a wall or a monument sign, and how those messages change, and we would expect that to take five or six months in order to, to come back to council. And see if there's other things that council would like to investigate, such as special use permits or separation requirements from other businesses with digital signs, or how far away from residential. Those things can start getting kind of very legal in nature, and we would need to work closely with our friends in the legal department. And because of that complexity, we would anticipate that taking a little bit longer than option B right there on the slide. So with that, Mayor, happy to turn it over.
Thank you very much. All right, discussion. Yes, Councilwoman Stip. Vice Mayor Stip.
Bill, that works. In, uh, in an effort not to pontificate, but I, I am curious. To me, it makes, it makes sense for us to continue this in some form of extending the boundaries of our entertainment district. For example, running it all the way down Australia Parkway to MC 85, running it to Litchfield Road, you know, kind of strip annex mentality, to Litchfield Road, Litchfield from McDowell South to Van Buren, just in those areas that are non-residential, et cetera, that we know are going to be our commercial corridors. Pebble Creek Parkway, I think, was in that map, but I'm not sure if it, but I believe it was. So I would be very much in favor of that, so we're not getting it just popping up on the corner of Bullard and Indian School, right in the middle of three sides of residential, and now we've got this, you know, marquee or whatever it is you want to call it. However, saying all of that, looking at the timeline, excuse me, Culvers is a now issue? Have we given them advice about having it being like our sign at the park, a non-conforming or whatever the, the term was for it, that we would allow it, give them an opportunity to expedite that? Culvers is known for their little digital marquee. When we approved Culvers, I assumed, wrongfully so, that we had already done this. Otherwise, I would have done it that night, made sure that we were able to get them their, their electro, the electronic signage that they're absolutely known for. So I'm, I'm looking for two, two solutions. One is the long-term, how do we extend this? And then B, the short-term, how do we get Culvers to get what they need so that they can continue to be the, the shop that they are and the reason that we all were so excited that they were here, not only for their store, but also for their regional headquarters and, and training.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor Stip, with regard to the extension of the entertainment district, bringing them down, extending it down Australia Parkway or down Litchfield or Pebble Creek and so forth, really then puts us in a position that we're picking and chooses, choosing the portions of the community where our electronic signs can go. And so there's, if you think about it, what's, what's the difference on Van Buren than at the corner of Litchfield over by Arby's, for example? There's really fundamentally not a whole lot of difference. No residential over there, there's no residential right over here by our office either. So it puts us in that position where we have to pick and choose, and I think that puts us in a, in a legally precarious portion, and I might turn that over to Rourke in order to...
No, no, I agree. I think once you start broadening it up into those areas, you're, you're, you are exposing yourself to, to the, the picking and choosing. I think you can distinguish obviously between the zoning categories, the commercial versus the residential, and you can even impose, you know, setback requirements from residential within those commercial zonings. But I think once you've stretched that entertainment district to those, those ends, you're, you're probably getting a little more risky legally, rather than just looking at, you know, allowance by right in, in commercial with the regulations that Christopher talked about.
Okay, so if that's not the option, then I guess I would look at your option B, I think, to, to do that. But that does not preclude a, I don't want it to take six months before Culvers gets their sign. So if there's, if there's a piece in that, I mean, when I heard that we had denied Culvers' sign request, I was flabbergasted. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to do these things parallel, one we get to yes and the one we keep going to get to the comprehensive solution.
Are you done? Okay. Councilman Bazillo.
Just for clarification, you say we can't regulate text, but if they had that old-fashioned kind where they slide the, the stuff in in front, we couldn't tell them what they put on that either, I would assume, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We can't regulate the content of the signs, that's correct.
So those kind would be easier for some mischievous individuals at night to kind of move the letters around, and you go down the street and there's all kinds of words sitting on there. I think with electronics, it's a little more protected because it's by a computer, by the business. I'm with Councilmember Stip. I was surprised at Culvers. I, I've seen their signs. It's not intrusive at all, and they rely very heavily on that sign to move their ice cream specials. So I'm with Council, Vice Mayor Stip on that. I, I just, I'd like to see Culvers get that sign, but not create a mass hysteria of signs everywhere. And I don't know how you do it. That's what you guys get paid to do, but I think denying Culvers, Culvers, excuse me, is, is a mistake.
Molly?
Well, I'm going to add to the mixture. I certainly want a moving sign by our new recreation center or the pool. I mean, where else are we going to advertise pool hours or special events or, or whatever? And that's right down from Culvers anyway. We need to promote in our city, and especially right now with the COVID-19 crisis and all of our businesses shut down, and we don't know how many are going to come back. I think we need to do everything we can to get them going, whatever it takes. And I don't mind a sign at Walgreens. When I go through Avondale and I go by their Walgreens and I read the moving signs, and it tells me Diet Coke's on sale, three for $9.99, I stop and go in there. I don't have to read their ad. I just have to read their moving sign. So I know in, in years past, we've had a lot of problems with our sign ordinances of being too restrictive, and I just think now maybe we need to take a fresh look. But I'm with Bill and with Joe. I'm absolutely astounded that we're even talking about Culvers having a moving sign because they always do. So maybe next time, if y'all bring something before us and we're going to vote to even let them come in our city, we need to have all of that part of the conversation that, yeah, they're the kind that has the moving signs, and we need to approve everything at once, so that they don't have to think we're having to discuss it separately just to give them a sign package, and we're delighted they're here in Goodyear. We recruited them.
Next, Councilwoman Laura Townen.
I think we're going to have so far four for four here. I agree with the last three that spoke. Yeah, I'm surprised that Culvers, Culvers sign wasn't approved because that is kind of their, yeah, their trademark, thank you. So I, I don't have a problem. We're not talking about putting giant pylon signs everywhere down the street. That area has changed since I think we even did our entertainment air, district, our original one, because now we are putting our rec center and all that. I mean, that's now kind of changed, and some of the other stuff that may go in there. So I don't have a problem with it, and if there's something we can do to push Culvers' sign, no, ahead till we get this, so they don't have to wait six months, so they can get it done with their building, so they're not going back and reconstructing whatever electrical and stuff they need for that, I, I would fully support that. I think when we had some of these original sign ordinances, digital wasn't the thing, and technology has changed, and I think we need to keep up with it, and of course, make sure that they're not blaring into neighborhoods with sound and lights into people's homes. But Australia on that one section where they are, it's, there's no homes right there, so I, I think that is acceptable. So if we could do that, and then, so other businesses in our, our rec center can have a sign that says like our community park, so I'm fine with that.
Councilwoman Hampton.
I mean, I want to also make sure businesses are able to do what they need to do, but I also want to make sure that, to your point, that, I don't know, they don't look tacky, that they're controlled, that they are still not so bright, and all the different things that control it, so it can still look like a good, I don't know, like we want to with Goodyear, so, or that looks like in translation to that. Did, are we currently at risk, I guess to Rourke's point, are we currently at risk letting or having a district, entertainment district? Because I know you mentioned you didn't want to extend it to the other areas of the town, because that might expose us to more things, but we're already treating one part of town different than the rest, right?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilperson Hampton, the entertainment district right now, as Katie alluded to, is intended to be very high-density, commercial, regional draw, where people from outside in the city come for goods and services and entertainment. And so because of that differentiation, that, that is not everywhere in the, in the city. It's just in that location. So from that perspective, it, it does make sense to have different requirements. There are hours of operation, noise, all of those different types of things are more flexible and allowable in that entertainment district.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't even know what Culvers trademark sign even looks like, but, but either way, but that, I mean, Culvers is, I'm worried about the park, if there's going to be, I don't know, how we can control the flashing lights and things like that, and people playing and doing things over there at nighttime. I don't know how, I don't know if it'll be that big of effect, or the houses that are somewhat close to that Culvers. But, um, I don't know. I just, so make sure it's somewhat controlled, if there's some districts, extend it down a little farther, just depends if we want it high-density or not. But, um, yeah, I'm kind of mixed on it. I want to make sure that businesses can do well, but I want to make sure Goodyear still looks good also, so.
Yeah.
Can we look at the slide that says different types of signage? Okay, so the digital messaging with just the words, we see everywhere, anywhere we go places, and they're sort of unremarkable, but I'm not clear about, I feel like we've been using the term digital messaging and electronic message center interchangeably. Are they different as the picture? I don't know. Is that changing? Is it colorful?
Mayor, Councilperson Kano, so as a result of the US Supreme Court case, I'm going to borrow this for a second, Katie, the pointer's over here, here it is. As a result of the US, sorry, as a result of the US Supreme Court case, we, cities, not just Goodyear, but cities overall, cannot make a distinction between this type of digital sign or this type. Either you allow them or you choose not to allow them.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps me to understand. I used to work in downtown Phoenix, and they'd have those vans come by with those digital billboards driving around those streets. Are those permitted in Goodyear?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kano, it's, that wouldn't be considered signage.
Okay.
It's a vehicle.
Okay, that's really interesting. Well, I, I am in favor of the digital signing in, in the commercial districts. Just curious if we would regulate if there's a minimum distance between digital signs or if proximity to intersections has anything, any bearing to do with appropriate signage?
Mayor, Vice, Vice, excuse me.
You can put her vice for the night. It's okay.
Councilperson Kano, we have some homework to do. Sounds like council's direction is to, let's allow digital signage in the community. So we need to see what's best practices in terms of not just the brightness of the signs themselves, but how far apart from residential they are, as well as how close to other signs they, they can be located. So we have homework to do.
Okay, just curious even if the signs go out when the businesses are closed or if they, if the signs stay on. Interesting. So this is sort of a sidebar. There, I believe the city put up a digital sign in front of Liberty Utilities westbound on McDowell, just west of Litchfield, but it's never been used. What, what is that? Oh, with, on our, on the, on McDowell? Oh, okay, I was just curious. I've always wondered.
We'll get some additional information for you, but that's correct, it's an A dot sign, and it's limited to what the messaging can be.
All right, thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other comments?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
I don't think we got to Vice Mayor Stip's question number two, which was how to get Culvers done. But just to be clear for everybody, this current ordinance outside of the entertainment district does not allow digital signage. So we have no administrative ability to approve anything, because we would be going against what the, what the ordinance and what the law says. So just to be clear with that. So that's, that's why we're here tonight. With regard to Culvers moving forward, we cannot permit a sign to go in there and look the wrong, look the other way. But what we can do, as we were talking with, with the city attorney, was is they could install it and just leave it blank until we get the, until we get the regulations created.
Council, Vice Mayor Stip.
Okay, so I understand the ordinance prohibits you as staff from administratively doing that. What prohibits us from taking an action? Don't we have, can't we issue a special use permit? Can't we, I mean, how do we get the digital sign up on our own property?
That's a...
In the high school.
I don't have a good answer to that.
Well, high school education is, is exempt.
Yeah, it, we're exempt because it's a governmental use. You, you don't necessarily have to comply with your zoning codes.
Oh, so we took our own loophole.
Yeah, is one answer. But the other answer is, I mean, it's going to require a zoning tax amendment. Now, we can work to shorten that time period that was presented this evening, but we really need to bring the zoning code into compliance. You can't really handle a zoning matter as a one-off, then you're into spot zoning, which is a whole other issue. So I think the best we can do is, is expedite the zoning tax amendment to permit the digital signs, and perhaps, as we were talking about, maybe there's a way where they could construct but not activate, if that would address that one issue.
How close are they to needing it up?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Stip, my understanding is that they would like to open the first part of August.
So can we have it ready so that they can turn it on?
We have to go, so we need to do some research, and we have to go through an advertisement process and so, legally mandated advertisement process and so forth. And so by the time you add up those steps, I can tell you we won't have it done by August.
Okay. Councilman Campbell.
So Christopher, are you saying that we can't do an, an ordinance before August because you have to advertise we're going to pass an ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Okay, how long does it take you to advertise it? 30 days? It doesn't have to go through the planning and zoning?
Yes, ma'am. It has to go through Planning Commission as well.
For us to do an ordinance, really?
For a zoning amendment, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Wow, I think we're in the wrong business, counsel. Wow.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes?
Councilperson Campbell, it's just like any zoning land use change, like the ones you heard tonight from Christian with the rezoning of the Goodyear 82 or so forth. We have to give notice, it has to be noticed, we have to go to Planning Commission, they have to hold a public hearing. So, the process, regardless if we're changing words or paragraphs in the ordinance itself, or changing the land use designation on the ground, uh, is, is the same.
Well, how do we change the sign ordinance? Do we have to go through this, through planning and zoning and all of that just because we wanna change the sign ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, then maybe we can get it and get it done by September. There's no rea, and we, we know what we wanna do.
Yeah, we need, we have...
Don't make it so difficult that it's gonna take six, eight, 10 months to do it.
It will, we will get it back to you as expeditiously as possible. We do need to follow the, the law so it's not invalidated and we don't have a legal problem. But we, we clearly understand the direction and we'll work to implement it as quickly as possible.
Councilman Fazillo?
Yeah, if there's legally things you have to follow, you have to follow, uh, maybe, and, and again, question for the attorney, um, can we give the owner a heads-up that they could structure it in a way that it's coming, but because of certain requirements that we have to do, it won't be there by the time he opens, but maybe there shortly afterwards?
We can certainly communicate, uh, the, the direction the staff has given this night, tonight from Council, but there are statutorily certain processes and timeframes.
No, I, you know, I understand that. I would hate to see them build something on this building that they would have to rip down and redo to meet the requirements. That, that's my only question.
Understood.
Go ahead, Christopher. Answer that.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Fazillo, we've had some conversations with the, the gentleman with Culvers before, and he would intend to construct his sign and have a, a panel there that could pop out, that then he could install the, um, digital electronic message board in that area of the signage. So, the whole sign doesn't have to be ripped down or anything of that nature. There's a component that would pop out and you push this in and connect it all up.
That works for me.
Councilwoman Laura Tannen?
I think that's a good idea so they don't have to re, you know, do the electric and all that stuff that's gonna go to it. Is there any way, and I don't know, um, we made exceptions before for grand openings to have signs out longer before and stuff. Is there any way that we could fit the Culvers sign into one of those exceptions like we've done before, to let people have their grand opening banners out or have extra that don't usually don't? We did that at one time, too.
Mayor, um, Councilperson Laura, Laura Tannen, we, um, as part of the mayor's executive order declaring a state of emergency for COVID, um, we have allowed a lot of extra signage in the community, and you've probably seen that around when we're out and about to support our businesses. And so, uh, Culvers is certainly eligible to take advantage of all of those benefits, uh, in terms of grand opening signage or other signage during, during this time. Um, if you're referring to the electronic message board, um, because that is not allowed by the ordinance, I think we're back to the same spot that we were before, that the way that, uh, the Culvers can construct is to put a panel in there that can pop out and then at the applicable time, pop it in, pop in the electronic message center.
I'll try.
Well, I can see that's a lot of work. Was Council all finished? Brandon, did you wanna talk? Go ahead. Sorry.
Following up, yeah, I just wanna make sure if we're gonna do just for Culvers, I don't know, I'm just trying to think. I guess, I'm trying in my mind, I'm trying to remember what a street looks like in Phoenix or other places where all these digital signs are at. And, I don't know, I just wanna make sure Goodyear looks good. I wanna make sure we're smart about the spacing, the brightness, and everything else. I just don't want it to look like Phoenix or some other places that I wouldn't want to, I don't know, because we're different than those other places, too. So, I just wanna make sure we're doing our due diligence when we're going through, even though we're trying to sound like we're, I wanna make sure Culvers is successful, too. I just wanna make sure we're not just for them, that we don't make the rest of the city not look good because, because of that. And I know that, I remember it was a long process last time you brought the, the sign ordinance to us. So, that was like a year, it was like a year and a half process of, of all the signage and we passed that, I think, a couple of years back. So, I know it's not, there's a lot of detail in that, in that ordinance. So, um, yeah, I just wanna make sure we do it right. So...
Did you wanna address that, Christopher?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, with, when we updated the sign ordinance in 2017, I believe it was, it was about a year and a half progress, uh, process. And we, uh, really engaged with the business community to make sure that we were addressing the issues that were important to them. As part of this process, we would also engage the business community to make sure that the digital signage that we're proposing isn't creating some other unintentional consequence for the, for them as well. So, we are, we can't just do this, we're, we're not gonna just do this in a vacuum by ourselves and come back to you real quick. We need to come back so that we do it, we do it one time and correctly to address the issues that you've brought forward, create some flexibility as per the Council's direction tonight, and allow businesses to move forward with it. But, um, we also want to, we'll get, work with the chamber and with our friends in ECHDEV and have some meetings with the business community as well. So, because we wanna get it right and do it only one time.
Has everybody finished? Oh.
No, I was just gonna say, Brandon, if you wanna take a look at a Culvers, there's one, I believe, at, uh, Avondale Boulevard.
It is.
In, in Avondale, uh, to see what that sign looks like.
Right, you can see it from the highway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's, I guess it's more the visibility than where it is, too. Um, you know, it is a concern. We've had problems with signs since I've been on the Council since 2005. It's been brought up. And we were extremely conservative for a long, long time. And of course, then when he had I-10 sign, that became controversial. And before that, it was controversial for the, for the, uh, the shopping center, when Macy's was coming in. And so, people screamed about that because it's too high, it shows, um, the lights look too bright, and we heard all of that. And so, we did it anyway. But I guess we must have done it within the law, or nobody noticed. I have a little bit, I think a little bit of both.
Turn on the mic, yes.
Yeah, I think a little bit of both. And this is kinda the same way, a little bit of both. So, my feeling are, as close as we can get to the accomplishment, it's gonna take time. And if they're willing to put up, you know, the standard frame and bear with us, I liked the overlay idea. Reason I like the overlay idea, because we got the stadium down there. We don't do anything with the stadium either, except the lights. It's a stadium. Look at the money we've put in that. We should have something when you pass that. I know there's houses across the street, and I know that they don't like the fireworks and they don't like the lights. Guess what? We still have them, right? And, uh, in a restaurant where it's not as high, um, and in the front of it, the side of it, it's, it's not, you know, as long as it's not sitting next to a home, I wouldn't want to do that with anybody. And controlling the brightness, no. It's a real job for the law and for our, our lawyer to figure this out. But I do think we need to move on. Um, you may even have something of kind of signage or lights in the civic area. I don't know. Especially when you're having more housing in there, you're having, you know, who knows? Maybe a hotel will get in there. I don't know. But I just think we've come to the time in Goodyear and the progress. We need to figure this out. It may not be the same as everybody else's, and it may be a real pain for your develop, your department. And in the end, it may not be what everybody wants, but maybe it'll be close enough to satisfy both sides. So, I, I'm looking at your faces like, oh, really? Okay, we're gonna go do this. Uh, and Katie, I definitely see that in your face. So, I know that this is not a fun, but I don't know how we can say no to this, all of us knowing all along that they had a sign out. I approached them so long ago about coming to Goodyear, and they didn't come. They went to every place but us. And so, this is our chance to get that, that industry here. And they're good and people love them. So, and then, but I guess what, what really is a problem is that businesses that wanted them, we said absolutely no. And so, I don't know how you contend with that unless you put an overlay. Okay, any other comments? City manager?
Mayor?
Yeah.
May I say one more thing? Um, this isn't about anything associated with our department at all. We're happy to implement Council's direction and policy, and that's what we're paid to do, and that's what we're gonna do. And we'll figure out the best approach and make those recommendations to you all as this moves forward. So, um, we, that's what, we're here tonight to have that conversation. So, thank you for your input. That's, we have our marching orders.
I didn't mean that as a ding for the department.
No, no, I didn't. I know you didn't, but I just wanted to make sure.
I do know, uh, the stress it puts on you. There's no question about it. And it's a hard one to figure out and stay within the law. So, um, it's a big job for all of us. And be ready for criticism, because I can't tell you in the past, there were a number of businesses that wanted some type of attention to their business. So, yeah, Sherry?
You brought up a good point with the stadium and that, you said, Roy said that entertainment districts are where people come from outside and go in. Isn't that what our stadium really is? It's designed to bring in outside people, not from the city, to come in and, and, and go to events there because we couldn't fill it up with just 10,000 Goodyear residents every time. So, could that may be the loophole to make that the entertainment district, at least down to the stadium and the restaurant? I guess there was another shopping mall down there because that is exactly what that's made for.
We could look at that. I, I still have, in my mind, difficulty distinguishing between Estrella and Litchfield or...
No stadium on Litchfield.
I understand.
People are not driving, hitting every single road on Litchfield where people will go to every single spring training stadium for fun, from out of town. But you're just, you're not helping.
Does density of other business have anything to do with this?
Excuse me, I...
Does density of an area of business have anything, any more power?
It, it's really more about distinguishing between the types of use and why you're allowing the use in certain areas versus other areas. And, um, I think it's more defensible if you take like a, a commercial use. You know, if you have a Culvers on Litchfield, how's that different than a Culvers on Estrella? It's the same type of use, just happens to be on two different streets, although they're both commercial districts. If you get a challenge or from a, a business, how do you defend the government regulation in, in a certain area? That, what you recommend, the stadium may make some sense. Um, a more conservative approach would be to allow it, uh, as a matter of right, in a, in a commercial district. But we certainly can work within the parameters that Council directs.
Okay.
It's how, how strongly do you feel about it? It's...
Well, you, you saw the dialogue here. Everybody thinks we should do it, but then there are a lot of bridges to cross, a lot of leaps to make. So, and, and I feel that it might be helpful to bring the business community together and have a talk with them and, and invite those businesses that would be type, that would wanna see a sign. And let them hash it out and see what the end result of that is.
Mayor, as long as it doesn't take six or eight or 10 months to do it. I mean, trying to get the business people together now, I mean, I don't know.
Well, it's, it is gonna take, this is an overnight thing.
No, I know it's not, but I'd like to see it at least before Christmas, if we could.
I, I would like to see it, too.
Six months.
But I sure don't wanna have to take it down. I don't wanna have to go to court. I don't wanna have to, and that's what we're, we have to, we have to, uh, we have to make sure that doesn't happen. And so...
Why would we go to court? I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
Somebody could sue us because they wanted one, we didn't allow them to have it.
But they could come back now, couldn't they?
And people that come in this city, and businesses now, came to us and wanted those kinda signs.
Right.
Okay, so, that's a known fact. Um, so, we have to, I think, proceed cautiously. And I'm for the sign, okay? Um, I think it's important. But it, I think it's also one reason we didn't get them right away. They went to other cities. Bill?
You know, the solution may, this may be a twofold part where we get this text change done sooner rather than later, and then we go through this public process to fine-tune it and then revise that. There's, I know we, we don't wanna do things twice, but you, on the slide that, the pre, one of the slides, you showed all of the cities that have these things. We are not creating something from scratch. So, we should be able to get somewhere quickly, a Band-Aid before the tourniquet, and then let's, then we'll, we'll fix the problem. But, which is kinda what, you know, Sherry's going with. If we draw this line down to the, down to the ballpark as a temporary get out of jail free card while we develop the rest of the system, that may be the, the creative solution that gets us to yes on this one issue while we then tell everybody else who wanted one of these signs, we are gonna work on this, on this, on this program. I mean, there's, we, that's the kinda solution I think we need to be looking for. Um, and, but I'm, you know, I know, Wally, you're right. This is gonna take a year. By the time we start going through COVID meetings with six people at a time, and there's 36 people that wanna talk, so there's six meetings, and it's gonna take forever. So, uh, between the staff, I'm confident that there's a solution there. Let's just hear about it through a staff report. There's a lot of head nods, so I think people are kinda getting what we're talking about.
Any other comments?
Well, thank you very much. It is the late hours, 9:21, and I think this is the latest we've ever been. And so, um, uh, our next meeting will take place on Monday, June 22nd, with a regular meeting, work session as special meeting, sounds like a late one again, uh, to begin after the CFD meeting schedule at 6 o'clock. No further business. This meeting's adjourned.